Thanks so much. Then I'll go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howell.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
Thank you.
Great, Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Our Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Train, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Train, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so moved and seconded, is there any discussion? We see none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, five, one, six, zero, the ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Next, we have public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and the public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@citycouncil@samamish.us. If you're wishing to give verbal public comment this evening, please join the Zoom meeting. Information on how to join is listed on our media accessibility at the top of our agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if they wish to give comment. If joining the meeting by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and you will be given the ability to turn on your webcam if you desire. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you'll be muted at the end of that three-minute period. Madam City Clerk, is there anyone wishing to give public comment this evening?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing *9. So we have two commenters so far. I will unmute callers in the order they have raised their hands. When it is your turn to speak, you will be converted to a panelist, be unmuted, and can turn on your webcam if desired. During this conversion, it will feel like you have been removed from the meeting. Please wait a few seconds and you will return. You will have three minutes to provide comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by setting your name and the city you live in for the record. Okay, now we're up to three commenters. I will now unmute the first caller. Mr. Dahlquist.
Mr. Dahlquist, can you hear us?
Can't hear anybody.
Yes, we can hear you.
Are you ready to speak?
Yes. Can you hear us okay?
Okay, sorry, I can't hear you there.
That's okay.
Hi, my name is Frank Dahlquist. I'm a captain with Eastside Fire and Rescue and located in Samamish. I'm one of your firefighters at Station 81 and 83. I managed both those stations for the past two years as the station captain. I will soon be separated from the agency because of the vaccine mandate. And we have about two weeks before a group of us will be separated because of that. We're asking the city council and the mayor to support us by asking the fire chief to review our accommodations requests and provide a reasonable accommodation. Up until this point, we have not been afforded the opportunity to continue to work. There's a vast majority of fire departments in the state of Washington kept their firefighters working on the line as firefighters. But unfortunately, in King County, it was up to the fire chiefs, and I'm not placing blame, but it's just what we had chose as an agency at that time to not give accommodations to firefighters to continue to work. Other agencies within King County kept their members working in light duty positions. We were not afforded that opportunity. At this point, in the age of COVID, we're now living with COVID, and we're asking for our religious exemptions to be approved with an accommodate, or they are approved, excuse me, but our accommodations to be approved and continue to work. And we're asking the city council to ask the fire chief, either through a resolution, to have us, our accommodations reviewed, and hopefully place us back on the line. Again, we're valued members. This group represents about 170 years of fire experience of just career, not counting volunteer. And we are highly trained. Many of us hold leadership positions in our agency. And myself, I'm a state-qualified instructor for the past 10 years. I'm one of the highest-level wildland positions for wildland firefighting. And I hold federal-recognized training certificates, as well as being able to train others in those things. Again, we're a very dedicated staff. We choose to come to work every morning and risk everything for other community members. And we just ask that, you know, we knowingly took that risk when we walk in the door, whether it's through COVID or going to a structured fire. And we just ask that, you know, that dedication that we had to our communities here in Samamish and around the Eastside area is acknowledged. And then that dedication can be returned back to us in this time. I think we have the opportunity to provide this safely. We have been doing masking testing and social distancing for the past 18 months prior to our separation. And that is a reasonable accommodation that many agencies had done to keep their firefighters working. And in this case, those reasonable accommodations were denied.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Acting City Manager, I did speak with Mr. Dahlquist earlier this evening. And as the city council has been kind of peppered with some emails on this subject matter today, this was the first that I was aware that Eastside Fire and Rescue was potentially separating from some of its members. And it's a little bit of a delicate topic, I think, for us to get ourselves embedded in. But I wondered if maybe we might understand from the fire chief's perspective, kind of, you know, some of these issues, just to help us. I think when we have firefighters that are working in our community, that are reaching out to the council, asking for assistance, it behooves us to then kind of understand the issue a little bit better. If that's something that you might be able to do with our chief clerk, I think that would help. I will say, in my conversation with Mr. Dahlquist, that time is of the essence. They only have a couple of weeks. So I think information back to council would be helpful, just so that we can understand the issue and find out if there's a place where we fit into the equation here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll reach out to Chief Clark first thing in the morning.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Moran, do you have a question?
A comment. This is a much bigger scenario, and there's also state laws that are involved in this that have created this scenario. So this is much bigger than just chief denying people to come back.
Yeah, understood. I think in consideration of the conversation that I had with Mr. Dahlquist earlier this evening, other areas of the, outside of King County, have been able to, it's on an agency basis. But I always know it's best to get information. So if, I think our acting city manager can bring that full circle for council, so that we kind of have both sides of that coin and know where, if we can fit into this equation. Because I'm not sure that there's a role for us here, but I don't really know that until I understand the issue from both sides.
Well, usually, we don't take part in, well, never mind.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know that there's a place for us here. I just, I think it behooves us to ask the question, though. Madam City Clerk, is there another commenter?
I will now unmute the second caller. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish here. I'd like to call about some items on the proposed work plan that I think should have some actions taken to change, in my opinion. On the community vision, which is C2, I think it should do some more investigation to find out from our community, as a residential community, what the residents feel about having housing supplies optimized to meet their needs over their lives. That wasn't a part of the process. I think we know, we needed to know that information and consider that in our vision statement. In regards to items E4 and E5 on stormwater, I think those two items should be removed completely. Our King County Surface Water Manual and Samamish Addendum are the most stringent in the region. Working fantastic. And to my knowledge, there's been no stormwater issues caused with any of the projects that had been built to those standards or the equivalent standards in the town center. I think our full focus as a community should be to work on stormwater retrofit for projects that were built before the time that the 2016 manual was adopted. In regards to the EIS and topics T1, T2, T5, T6, and P10, there are several issues with the EIS. I've turned a lot of emails in it that need to be corrected. But fundamentally, it works on lane capacity projects that are based on a volume over capacity that is highly constrained relative to the road's capacity, where we really don't have many traffic problems in Samamish, other than at school pickup and drop-off and choke points outside the city. I think those truths should be worked on and that the EIS should be altered to focus on school pickup and drop-off and choke points, and not on lane capacity programs. And all the other T items be appropriately adjusted based on those changes. And lastly, on items L2, L3, and L5, the Comprehensive Plan, Urban Growth Capacity Study, and the Housing Action Plan, what's missing from all of them is internal housing need numbers for our community. That information must inform
Fifteen seconds remaining.
of these things. So it's time to gather that information first, before advancing these. After having that information, advance these three. Happy to talk to you about any of this in a lot more detail. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. Is there anyone else that's joined that was wanting to give public comment?
I will now promote the third commenter. Mr. Sterns.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just want to start by saying thanks for what you guys do. Thanks for representing Samamish. I'm just getting on tonight to echo what my brother Dahlquist was saying. I also was let go from the Eastside Fire and Rescue for the vaccine mandate. And our ask is just asking that you guys reconsider, bring it to the attention of the department again, as you represent Samamish, to see if now that things have changed in the landscape of COVID and vaccines, that we could possibly return to work. As my brother Dahlquist said, we are highly skilled, highly trained, love our jobs, have a lot of experience, are very passionate about what we do, and we want to get back to work very badly. We have families, mortgages, all that life brings with it as far as cost goes. And things have not been easy for most of us, because transferring jobs as a firefighter is not a small task. It's really difficult to do. Again, we were all granted exemptions, led to believe that we would be retained and then terminated for not receiving a vaccine after getting an exemption. Again, we're just looking to ask for you guys to look at the facts as of now in regards to the cost, the benefit of bringing us back, and the safety and efficacy of the departments, even in King County. There are departments in King County that have retained their unvaccinated members and have done so successfully and safely for them and the public. And we're just asking that you guys relook at that and possibly bring it back to the chief as the city council and just see what he has to say. And again, I appreciate you guys' time, I appreciate what you do. God bless you guys, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. We have asked our acting city manager to look into this issue.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, does that wrap up public comment?
That's all for public comment. I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Next, let me make sure I'm in the right spot on my agenda here. We have an executive session. This is for pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. Mr. City Manager, just, we do have a time associated with this. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna take a swing at it and try to remember how much time we allotted. I wanna, what's rattling in my brain is 20 minutes, but that might be a little much. I know Emily Minor from Ogden Murphy is filling in for Carrie tonight, and she might have a better sense.
I think, good evening, Council. Emily Minor here, my name says Carrie Sand, we'll try and get that fixed, my apologies. I would estimate 20 minutes, and if we come out earlier, that's okay.
Great, great. Do, I assume we're not anticipating any action?
That is correct.
Great, okay. So council will be back in approximately 20 minutes, and we do not anticipate any action. We'll see you over there, Council.
The council has extended the executive session to 7:25 PM.
We have everybody back, not quite yet. We have Councilmember Moran. Councilmember Moran, are you back on yet? Oh yeah, do we have Councilmember Lam yet? Okay, I just, all I can see is picture, if you have an active video, that's all I can see. So if you don't have a video and I can't see you, okay. Is Councilmember Moran on yet, or no? Appreciate that. Very good. Okay. Council, our next item is consent, so I'd entertain a motion for consent.
So moved.
Thank you. For a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it is our further discussion. Council, this is where you get to pull something, Councilwoman Deputy Eric Clark, if that's what you're looking for, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item three. The work plan.
Any other changes, Council? I think seeing none, then, all those in favor of the consent calendar, sans item three, which we will move to unfinished business. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed? I said it, consent calendar is best. Next, we have presentations and proclamations. This month, we do have a present, or proclamation, excuse me, for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Is there any council member that would like to read that this evening and has it up? Councilmember Howell, thank you. Just make sure you guys yourself unmuted, though.
Yeah, there, I didn't start talking yet, so it doesn't count as a screw-up yet.
Nope.
So, proclamation Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2022. Whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas in King County, 7,152 adults and children received specialized assistance from organizations with programming for sexual assault victims in 2020. And whereas rape is among the most under-reported crimes for reasons that include victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within the system designed to support them. Additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silence victims. And whereas individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in and compounded by racial, gender, sexual orientation, and other forms of oppression. Black, indigenous, and other peoples of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ people, elders, people with disabilities, and other people targeted by oppression are affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas statewide, 29% of the survivors who were supported by a community of sexual assault organizations identified as black, indigenous, and people of color in 2019. Of those identifying ethnicity, 21% identified as Latinx and Hispanic. Whereas King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services for survivors from various racial, ethnic, faith, and cultural communities. Survivors who are immigrants and refugees, survivors who are LGBTQ, and survivors with disabilities. These culturally-specific services are critical to effectively respond to the specific needs and barriers many survivors face. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on women, men, children, and youth, include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, missed work, or school. And whereas working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors, while standing up to harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that Christine Mauchow, Mayor, and the Samamish City Council join advocates and communities across King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Howell, sheet that. Okay, the next item we have is discussions surrounding the Community Visioning Project and preliminary results and recommendations. I believe I'm turning this over to David Pyle. Let's stop just a second to get David promoted.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, David Pyle, Community Development. Thank you for your patience while I was being promoted. With me tonight from the Department of Community Development, we have Sarah Stiri, management analyst, and Miriam Blatner, our planning manager. Sarah will be doing, will be hosting the discussion on the community visioning. And I'll turn it over to Sarah for her to start.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Stiri. I'm the project manager of the Community Visioning Project. Unfortunately, our consultant, Ota, could not attend tonight's meeting. So I'm here tonight to present a video that our consultant prepared. After I share the video, I'm going to talk quickly about the next steps, and then I will open things up for you to provide your feedback under report and the proposed vision statement. Our consultant will then take a look at your, take, integrate your feedback to the final report, and then we will be able to refer, so that you can refer back to it when you will start reviewing the vision statement for adopting during the comprehensive plan update. With that said, I will share the video with you. Thank you.
Hello. This presentation reports the results of public outreach completed for the Community Visioning Project and the resulting recommended vision statement. The goal of this project was to ensure a strong and clear community vision guides the Samamish 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. We kicked off the project in summer 2021 and conducted outreach from mid-September into December. To finalize our outreach strategy and review the community survey before it was distributed, we presented at a joint city council and planning commission meeting on October 5th. We followed up with Planning Commission with our results on February 3rd, 2022, and incorporated their feedback into the report and this presentation. This presentation summarizes the final product for city council. Broad engagement with stakeholders in the city was a key priority for this project. To make sure we reached as many people as possible, we attended virtual meetings with city council and with the city's various commissions, attended or hosted virtual workshops and two popcorn with planning sessions, reached out to all 14 local schools, worked with classes at two elementary schools and two high schools, and clubs at one middle school, and met with the Samamish Youth Board at their annual retreat. We also contacted seven community organizations, 15 religious institutions, and 401 homeowner associations or property managers to spread the word about the project and ways to participate. We used Connect to Mamish, the city's social media channels, the city's e-news and print newsletter, and partner organization communications to promote the project. We also posted flyers at local business hubs throughout the city. The community survey was our primary method for gathering data. This was a two-part survey that included a statistically valid component, which was mailed to random households throughout the city, and a public online version that anyone could participate in who was interested. We received over 1,000 responses, and the statistically valid survey itself had a 16% response rate, which is double the responses needed for the findings to have statistical validity. Our efforts at contacting HOAs and community groups and advertising through social and print media drove a lot of interest and participation in the survey. So what did we hear? The big takeaway is that the 2015 community vision still has a lot of great bones with concepts that resonate with the community and all participant groups. Results indicate that the community continues to strongly favor environmental preservation, access to parks and open spaces, and tree protection in development projects. Residents also like the emphasis on quiet and peaceful neighborhoods that have ready access to necessities and quality-of-life amenities. Finally, we found that respondents value the city's culture of safety and friendliness, which was called "family-friendly, kid-safe" culture in the 2015 vision statement. We also found that some concepts are still works in progress, including aspirations related to housing, transportation, and social connection. Some updates are needed to bring the community vision into alignment with current values and priorities, including revising some language that seems a bit dated, too technical, or too obscure to be easily understood, and incorporating current community sentiments like climate responsiveness and community building. The statistically valid survey indicated that about 58% of respondents think the 2015 vision statement somewhat represents their views, making this a timely update. To inform the update, we noted that residents value safety, peace and quiet, green open spaces, low traffic, and great schools. The survey also indicated the need to address impacts of ongoing growth such as traffic, while improving walkability and housing affordability as a secondary priority. Planning Commission reviewed our initial draft report and recommendations and provided the feedback summarized on this slide. They wanted to see a greater emphasis on the statistically valid survey findings and a strong foundation for each element of the vision in quantitative data. They also wanted to see actionable and clear language for each statement in the recommended vision and clarity around format to emphasize key priorities. This feedback has been incorporated into the report and recommendations presented today. So what does this mean for community visioning? We translated the outreach findings into the six community value statements summarized on this slide. For more information, please refer to page nine of the report. The key values are diversity and inclusion for all people, protection and enhancement of the natural environment, a tight-knit social character, housing choices that meet the needs of all residents, improved transportation connectivity for all modes of travel, and resilience in both physical infrastructure and social networks. These value statements inform the final recommended vision statement, which is, "In 2044, Samamish is a safe and inclusive community with abundant natural resources, quality schools..." quality schools and services, and well-maintained infrastructure." To provide guidance in preparing and interpreting goal and policy language, we also recommended the contextual language that follows. "The city is a vibrant, thriving community with a strong identity built around its diverse cultures, arts, and events, and bountiful green spaces. The city's neighborhoods are peaceful and welcoming to all, supporting robust social cohesion and engagement. Housing is available for a variety of incomes, ages, and lifestyles. Sammamish embraces a tight-knit character while providing access to locally-owned retail, restaurants, and services that nurture the community's entrepreneurial spirit. The city's natural environment is well-preserved and interwoven into public and private spaces to enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. Convenient access and connectivity between residential areas and destinations make sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, and transit viable alternatives to driving. Sammamish is a resilient community with reliable utilities, sustainable city operations, and a culture of mutual support." So what's next? Once we receive council feedback on the recommendations, we'll finalize the report and post it along with a virtual art gallery of student work to the Connect to Mamish webpage at connect dot sammamish dot U S slash community dash visioning. City Council will also have further opportunities to review and revise the vision statement during the scoping for the two thousand and twenty-four update of the comprehensive plan. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So I assume you're just looking for feedback from council at this juncture?
Yes, um, I hope that video was helpful. Before I hand it over to the mayor to open things up for conversation, I want to summarize what's next. Um, can you see my screen? Just my PowerPoint. Just want to double-check.
Uh, we see that coming soon.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Uh, so the city council will review and reflect on the project's result and the proposed draft vision statement tonight. And then the project team will integrate this council's feedback under recommended vision statement into the final report, which we are going to, uh, which will be posted on our project website. After that, the city council will have the opportunity to revisit the vision statement during the comprehensive plan update, which, uh, and potentially adopting it in fall. Uh, with that said, I will hand it over to the mayor to start the conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So council, if you have comments relative to the vision statement? Councilmember Trinh?
Thank you, Mayor Mauchau. Um, and thank you to staff for the presentation. Uh, let me, can I just start with the obvious thing that I just see kind of missing out of here? Is that the twenty fifty vision, twenty, you know, twenty fifty vision for the Puget Sound Regional Council classifies, that's, that's a region, right? King County. The class, well, actually, it's bigger than that. So, um, classifies us as a bedroom community. So nowhere in there, in any of this presentation tonight, did I see the term bedroom community. I don't find that as a very, uh, it's a pretty simple term that could be, we could educate, uh, uh, the population as to what that means, but I'll just give you a quick rundown. Eighty-six percent of of the people in the city of Sammamish own their own home. Seventy-five percent of the people are families. That, that means there's children in the house. Um, so for some reason, if a third of the respondents in this survey want to change our vision to be a thriving community or an economically-driven, thriving community, then I think that's a minority. Second, I just would like to just say that, for the record, from reading all the six hundred and sixty-six pages, all the comments from the residents that wrote in, there's four things that stand out to me that become important in this case. First one, the top priorities for the next twenty years are preserving natural spaces and keeping Sammamish safe and quiet. Second, to those top priorities, which there was three of them, by the way, that growth is an issue. There are concerns that the future is mostly fueled by the impacts of growth and development. So our concerns are about growth and the impacts of that growth. Not that that needs to actually be stated in our vision, but as a council, we need to know that that was like the second tier of priorities for the residents. Third, was stated in by many of the, or the consultant and their analysis, was that residents place a high value on safety, safety, quiet neighbors, low traffic, great schools. And of those, Sammamish currently rates highly on all of these amenities. So nothing should change there. Like, if that is still the priority. Safety, great neighborhoods, bedroom community, low traffic, great schools. Number four, for the future planning, residents want to focus on infrastructure, preserving open spaces, and improving parks and transportation options. Ding ding ding. So preserving open spaces, who does that impact? A hundred percent of the residents are impacted by that. Improving parks, who benefits from that? Well, if, at a minimum, seventy-five percent of the families will benefit from that because we're going to build ballfields and improve the parks. Transportation options, two percent. Maybe three. But we need to get that two to three. Heck, give it four. Give it ten percent. Let's work on the transportation options to try to reduce the number of car trips, but the percentage is low. Those are the four that I see important, uh, staff that are moving forward with this. I do have a few questions. If I might, uh, take a little more time, Madam Mayor, I do have a few questions for the staff as far as, I don't know, so that was initially my comments, but I do have a few questions too. So I don't know.
Go ahead, go ahead and ask your questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, is there going to be a town hall meeting in the future?
Um, I believe, uh, originally, we had planned to have the town hall meeting, uh, on March thirty-first, but because, uh, it was delayed. We were originally was supposed to present to council on March fifteenth, uh, but we couldn't, but that made our plan to be delayed. And our budget doesn't allow us, because we had the timeline to do town hall at the moment, but I don't know in, during the comprehensive plan is scoping, we will have an option to do that or not. So I will hand it over to Miriam or David to talk about that part.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah. I don't think we're going to have a town hall meeting, as Sarah was saying, specifically for community visioning, but we will definitely be doing a lot of outreach for the comprehensive plan update, and that should be kicking off shortly. We've just selected our consultant and our firm link of that contract to bring it to you all for consideration. And so I know the vision will be carried over into that work, and I imagine that we'll have some form of town hall or other engagement event around the vision.
Okay, I think you just answered my question then, Miriam. So yes, we will have a town hall meeting. It will be later under the update. And if, if there is a cost to that, uh, can we scope that into, work on scoping that into the, the, uh, with the consultant? Okay, thanks. Um, next, our, shoot, so this kind of, if that's true, which I don't, so I'll just say that's not the best news. So what you just said is true, then at what point would the visioning statement go back to the planning commission for review and then have them respond to the council with agreeing and dissenting opinions?
I believe that goes, uh, early fall.
Perfect. So that, so we can, so I guess it, is it Evan? Okay, so next question, sorry. I'm just curious about stuff now. Uh, is Evan Fisher going to be the lead person on the planning commission for the visioning statement? All right.
Yeah.
Uh, so it, hi, David Pyle. The question, next question's for you, sir, sorry. Um, do you need direction from council, policy direction from council for, um, Evan Fisher in what we are looking for from the planning commission in regards to the community vision statement?
So, um, a couple of things here. Uh, one is, we're, we're really looking forward to transitioning into the kickoff of the comp plan update. We're really hopeful that with the, the status of COVID and the things that are going on, and that we can, that maybe that will stay the way it is and cases will remain low, and that we'll be able to actually have some community meetings like we used to. Uh, we'd really like to get back to that. Um, so we're really hopeful that, you know, come September, after everyone's back in school, that we could actually have some community gatherings that are in person. Um, you know, something that is along the lines of the, the family-friendly type gatherings that you would want to have in Sammamish. So we're, we're looking at that right now and trying to map out how to fit that into this, the, the comp plan update. Um, so that's, that, that question. Re- regarding the, uh, the direction to the, the planning commission, um, I think that, that we're going to need to first scope out the comp plan update. Um, and that direction to the planning commission will come at the point of scoping for the comp plan update and at the point of review of the vision statement. So, so keep in mind that this is simply a, a, a survey with some analysis on the existing vision statement with some ideas that are starting points for conversations that the community can have, the council, the planning commission, public comments on, on what we might want to do with the vision statement. Um, it's simply a recommendation to the council as a starting point for conversation. That's all it is. Um, and
I'd just say, Dave, I think the starting point is good. It's fine. It's, it's a good starting point. My challenge with that, with the whole thing initially was, well, where does the public get to touch it again? And so that's kind of what I'm pushing at here is that I, 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 I think we have a need for more public input, and where and when does the public get to touch this again? Because I know we are going to get to touch it again before it's adopted.
Yeah, at the point of kickoff of a comp plan update. And that, that's where we'll be doing scoping, meeting with the council, the planning commission will, will get to weigh in. Um, and we're working with the consultant now that we are, are moving through the consultant selection process. Um, and once the consultant contract is awarded by the council, then we will be able to have that additional support to start to pull together the full schedule for the update, and this type of feedback will be incorporated into that schedule. So knowing that, that there's a strong interest in, in including the public and having that opportunity for the planning commission to review this report with, with the council's feedback tonight, um, and for the council to take it up again, we'll definitely fit that into the, the calendar and the, the schedule of, of events as we get towards the, the more meat of the comp plan update.
Thank you, David. That's all, Madam Mayor, that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hou?
As, as, um, the, the thing that I noticed about the report is that there was, at times, conflicting information. It was as if, um, they, uh, they, being the public, would, uh, want one thing, but also the other. So I think that that's what we're going to spend a fair amount of time is resolution. And, and that's where I think your comment about bedroom community, I consider that an outdated term, for example. But there's going to be some wrestling, I believe, on terminology and what's going to fit and land best with residents over time. And so I think part of my question then is, how do we, how does that process happen? Because there are different points of view that, that hit. Like, we talk about traffic. Well, okay, when was that? Was that when you were picking up your kid? Or was it, you know, when you didn't expect it? You know, there's, there's, there's context that's kind of missing out of this report. And I'm kind of, so that's the piece. I'm wondering, uh, who's going to pick that up? Is the next consultant going to take forward the information from the survey, which is statistically valid, and then tease out the other subtext areas there and then validate against that? And are they responsible for that part?
Uh, yes. So I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, that's, that's an really important piece of work. Keep in mind, and we're going to be saying this a lot as we proceed through the periodic update of our comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plans are inherently conflicting. That is just a simple fact about a comprehensive plan. Um, you find, you know, policies on both sides that, that, you know, balance it out. Um, and it, it's, it's going to, you know, someone might, might side with one policy, but then there's another that another group sides with. So what we're trying to do is to, to create some, some balance in our direction for the city going forward so that we don't just go off on a tangent one way. We want to make sure that we're, we're staying on a track, that we know where we're going. And that's really what we're trying to do with this update is provide some policy and direction for the city going forward that staff and the council can use in making decisions.
And David, just one last question. Because we have not quite signed that contract, I'm assuming they haven't seen this result yet, have they? The survey?
Uh, they, they, they have not, that I'm aware of. I don't know, Sarah and Miriam have.
Just curious.
We haven't shared it with them directly because we're not under contract yet, but it is available online for the public to access, just like anybody else for the council material.
I wondered, okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
Looks like the mayor might be frozen.
Yep, she looks frozen there.
She's back.
Give her just a second. Oh, there she is. Okay, Councilmember Lynn, you were frozen there for a second. I think she's frozen again. Maybe not. Councilmember Lynn, can you hear us? Oh, you're muted.
I'm, I'm muted now.
There you go. Okay.
So thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. Um, I'm just going to address specifically the statement that, um, the, the recommended vision statement. Um, so I, I'm having a hard time with it. I'm having a hard time with it because I think the two thousand and fifteen vision statement is actually better. I mean, if we take out the words and the jargon and the words that aren't relevant anymore, I think it's a better statement, and I say that because it's more aspirational. Right now, the vision statement, and I understand why the, um, consultant did a one-sentence, um, vision statement, because, you know, brand development, which is a little bit my background, that is considered common practice to have a one-sentence vision or mission statement. But I think, um, the consultant kind of artificially constrained themselves by doing that. You can have a two, three-sentence, um, vision statement. Um, I would actually like the consultant to go back to the two thousand and fifteen vision statement and just change out the words. Um, this, like, the, the, the statement is one sentence. It's not aspirational. And I don't have that much of an issue with the value statements because they are supposed to support the, the vision statement. But in and of itself, you know, you could say that they're all great things. But, you know, the two thousand and fifteen statement talks about the past, the present, and the future. And it talks about, and as kind of hokey as it is, it talks about the human endeavors, right? And as a community, that's what we're here to, to, to support each other. And that is the crux of a community, and there's nothing in the statement and about community. Um, it's about quality schools, you know, and services, and, and, um, well-maintained infrastructure. Um, and one thing that I noticed that you mentioned a couple of times is that the community really wants to have climate responsiveness in this, in this statement as well, and I don't see anything here about climate. So that's another miss. Um, I did notice, and this is kind of a totally separate thing, and I'm, but I'm going to bring it up, is that because I support broadband, I did see in the, um, report that there was a strong desire for a broadband alternative, and I know- Report that there was a strong desire for a broadband alternative, and I know that didn't make the work plan. Um, and to uh, council member Train, where he mentions um, bedroom community. By definition, we are no longer a bedroom community, a bedroom community by definition is that we can, you know, that, that. You commute to work and you only sleep in this, in our sleep at home. And so many people work um remotely now that we are by definition out of bedroom community, so. You know, when I, when we talk about the two thousand fifteen statement, we could just swap out the words that don't work. And like in small towns, which I saw was the recommendation. So um, that is my feedback.
So, I don't see any more hands up, but I, I have some feedback as well, um. And I might actually ask staff to provide more of a definition relative to bedroom community, because I believe we still are a bedroom community. Um, by definition, it's a, a large number of people that live in a community but don't work there. And while COVID has turned things on its head, I don't know how long-term that plays out, but I think. The, the visioning of a bedroom community was that you didn't have. A, a lot of places where people would go inside your own city to work, like Microsoft, for example. I understand a lot of people from Microsoft are working from home, but I also know I'm seeing a lot more of the shuttle buses out on the street. Um, and, and Microsoft is very busy building um, on their campus, so I think we'll continue to see. People, you know, live in Sammish but commute outside. Um, and while I understand that the community feedback was that they didn't understand what that meant. You know, we can, you know, lengthen what it means in order to convey the thought that people reside in the city, but they work elsewhere. And I understand that that doesn't apply um wholesale, um, but on a larger scale, so. Um, I, I do still support the notion of bedroom community, one of the things that, that being a bedroom community means is that. The city of Sammish does not do an economic development chapter in our comprehensive plan. If we remove that and change what we are as a city, I think that is a much larger scale conversation that has to go out to the community. And that isn't something that we decide within the confines of a vision statement, that is really. If they don't understand what a vision, what bedroom community means, then the onus is then on us to explain it to them. And what the implications of not being a bedroom community are, because it really does start to change the entire face of what Sammish is. And I think that's a much larger conversation for our community. Um, I picked up on some of the same things that councilmember Howe did, which is there are incongruencies in the statements that we have here. And I think that is a larger conversation for our community as well, and maybe the town hall that I heard councilmember Train speak of is a great opportunity to. Engage, but I know that the draw for our town hall will be small, and I think the ideas of these conflicting ideas. Um, uh, is something that is much larger than a town hall, and some of those conflicting ideas that I picked up on in particular. Is that um, the community overwhelmingly supports a well-preserved natural environment. It is apparent that this is a key feature for which many households have located in Sammish. And while I understand that residents feel very passionately about our trees and our environment. The notion then that they also want um, a variety of housing types and they wanna retail are, those are incongruent things, right? We are, and I recognize we're inside the urban growth boundary, and that looks very different than outside the urban growth boundary. But I'm also trying to recognize what our community is saying they want and need. And those two do not dovetail terribly well, and I think, again, the onus is on us to, you know, kind of. Figure out, okay, well, what do you want? Cause you can't have a whole bunch of different types of housing, a whole bunch of retail. And your trees, they're not all going to fit here, and something's going to have to give um, to one degree or another. And I think, again, that's just a larger conversation that our community needs to have. Um, but I just found there's, there's clear incongruence between some of the, the, the items. Um, in the, in the vision plan, um, I'm just looking through some of my notes here, just to make sure I'm getting everything out. Um, I, I, I agree with councilmember Lam that we don't have to confine ourselves to the, that overarching statement. I mean, that's typically reserved for a mission statement, a vision statement is much larger. Um, so I don't. I don't know that, I mean, it's, it's fine, it's trying to encompass like all the other little bullet points below. I, I think your, when your vision statement gets so long, it gets so aspirational that you don't actually achieve the vision. And I think we wanna make sure that if we're putting in a vision statement, that, you know, we as council and the councils that will come after us are able to actually. Create policies that make that vision statement achievable. Councilmember Moran?
Okay, I'm trying to, I was trying to check off everything on my list that everybody's, sorry, to repeat everything. Um, but I do wanna repeat one that I think, two things that I think were really important, and. One of them is um, the bedroom community. To me, that is very important because of the fact that. It's who we are, it's who we've always been, um, and if we have people that are not understanding the term. Then to me, that is um, that's something that we need to, uh, we need to go out and explain. That's an education process, um, and that's our fault, that is not a fault, I mean, that's our, that's our job, that's our, that's for us to do. Um, and so, um, and there's other things, when, I was surprised when I saw the number of people. Who thought that the original statement was outdated, what part was outdated exactly? I would like to know um, exactly which parts they thought were outdated. It would have been interesting if I could, if they would have come back and kind of told me exactly which parts of it they thought were outdated. That, because to me, it, it, it would have given me a better sign of, is it the wording they thought was outdated? Or um, the way it was put together, I mean, it's, it was just really hard. Cause a lot of what I'm seeing from the survey is still the same things of what they've always wanted. And so um, how we package it back up in words. Uh, it, it's um. It, it's still gonna, I don't care how you package it back up in words, it's just another, um, another pretty package. But if we, I need to understand a little bit better of what part of it they didn't, didn't like or they thought was outdated. Um, so the economic plan, um, Christie, you kinda hit that, I kinda feel the same way on that. Um, so I guess, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting more information back. With Evan working with everybody and the information will get back in the fall. Um, but yeah, I'm, I, I really think that um. You know, the information we've gotten was really good, the percentage of people that we've gotten back, I, I thought it was, you staff, you did an excellent job.
Uh, David?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, I, I, I was ready to, to close, but I see councilmember Lam um, has her hand up, so I wanna defer to that.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Lam?
I just wanted to go back on that, the whole comment about bedroom community. So, I'm just looking at um, the comment here, it says that the, the bedroom. Community term is inconsistent with the stated community desire for increased commercial services, retail, and other employment basis, bases. So to me, it sounds like we have a survey, we have people that have expressed desire for these things. But yet there are certain council members here who have a certain vision and is, is very focused on this one vision. And we're not listening to what is in the survey.
So I would, I would disagree with that to, to, to this end, councilmember Lam, which is. I think one thing that probably was not fleshed out in the survey itself is whether or not people are considering. Town center in their comments, because I know I am, and we can still be a bedroom community with town center. By definition, um, if we are going to expand town center. Um, and bring in, you know, different types of retailers, start expanding that to some degree. Um, then that might alter whether or not we're still a bedroom community. But what we don't know is whether people answered that with um, no town center in mind. Or inclusive of town center, and because it is adopted um, in our plans, and we have, and, you know, at least. What, three developments already that are completed? Like, the town center is something that is, is here, but we can still be a bedroom community with the town center. Councilmember Train?
Well, shoot, Christie, I'm, I don't know, uh, uh, excuse me, Mayor Mauchow. Uh, correct in that, uh, the, the town, okay, the word could maybe. Uh, be synonymous with neighborhoods. Uh, I'm the neighbor, eh, I'm the bedroom community candidate, I'm the neighborhood candidate. However you wanna call me, whatever label you wanna throw on top of my beautiful bald head. You may, you may do that, uh, is, the, the town center itself has. Uh, is going to have, cause it's planned, it's in our comp plan, it's going to have neighborhoods. Or communities, bedroom communities within it as well, uh, one is the brownstones east and west. You have a, a mixed use, that's gonna be a different, uh, if you wanna call it, uh, I like to use the term a mosaic of neighborhoods. Is what the city to me looks like, uh, cause I look at the tree farm, and then I look at, you know. The Ichijo property, which is a bunch of townhomes, there, those are still bedroom communities. Those are, families live there. Uh, some actually have, ha- happen to be able to have the opportunity, which is wonderful, to actually work. From their home and run their businesses from their home, and my wife for, for time did have that option to do that, so. So it's, it's, we are a bedroom community mainly because we don't have some of the services. That, uh, I, I don't have a hospital in our city, so, uh, so I, I go over to Isakua Highlands to Swedish. So some of the services that, uh, I don't have big box here, we're not gonna have big box up on top of the hill. Big, big box is not coming, so Costco's not coming up, Home Depot, Lowe's, we're not gonna get big box up here. So, so that's kind of where I think, uh, Karen Moran was talking about, we just need to educate. The residents as to what we mean when we say a bedroom community, cause the, the region. The region sees us through twenty fifty, right, as a bedroom community. So, guess what? Uh, whether I like it or not, whether I approve or disapprove of it. We are seen as a bedroom community, let's embrace that. Let's, let's, let's move forward with the update on our comp plan with that in mind, knowing that we have seven sections. In our comprehensive plan, one of them does include the town center, the town center is moving forward. So I don't, I don't see where there's a problem with saying we're a bedroom community, we are a bedroom community, thank you very much.
Miriam? I'm afraid I'm gonna take it a little off topic, just going back to what councilmember Moran said, um. I did just quickly wanna point out, if you look in the packet, it's page eighty-five of the packet. Um, so it's pages eighty-five, eighty-six, and eighty-seven, dive a little bit. More deeply into the responses on the twenty fifteen community visioning and which phrases resonated most with folks and which didn't. And that might just be worth reviewing for you all as you re-review later. Thanks.
Councilmember Lam?
I would just say the easiest way to um, get past this definition is just to go by, like. What the dictionary says, because then we're not trying to create definitions that nobody is gonna understand except ourselves. Um, so I would just go with that.
So, yeah, I think bedroom community is, is used though through the state. As defining whether or not you do a economic development chapter of your comprehensive plan, I suspect that's why that term and. Um, as it was, was, was used in the original vision statement. Okay, so if there aren't any more hands up, um, David, uh, Miriam, Sarah, thank you. Appreciate your time on this, I know this is um, a lot of work. So, anyway, thank you.
There'll be more work to come on this, so thank you.
Well, that's good, that's kinda where my mind was going, I'm like, this is, boy, this is just the tip of the iceberg when we start talking about the comprehensive plan. Okay, very good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, council, it is eight sixteen right now, um, several items left to go, but we're gonna go back up to the item that was pulled from consent. Um, which was adopted in the twenty twenty-two work plan, and I don't. Uh, it was Deputy Mayor Clark that pulled that, so I'll turn that over to you to speak to.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mauchow, um, so I think, you know, we, we definitely discussed it a little bit, just even in this visioning statement, so. Um, the work plan as a whole, I think it's great, I know there's a lot of work moving forward. I guess my only two issues are um, the EIS portion, um, just moving forward with that potentially huge price tag. And um, you know, to me, it's like if we're discussing protecting the environment and green spaces, you know, but then there's that option to make. You know, Sahali quite the widening project, um, I'd really like to look at something different and really like to prioritize traffic reduction. And um, over increasing the capacity, so, you know, be oversee if that's what we're going to use, that's great, but um. Really prioritizing where we're going to, um, you know, put those funds and put that effort in. Um, the second would be the stormwater codes. Um, I think actually, um, Paul mentioned it in his public comment, uh, which I agree, that we should be focusing on. Um, prioritizing the retrofit projects over um, more stringent stormwater codes. Um, I haven't seen anything that has seemed to cause issue in our current water codes, so. Um, making that even more stringent and spending more time there instead of on retrofit projects. Um, to me, just doesn't seem like the best opportunity forward, so. I don't know how this would work, but basically I'm looking at, everything's great in the work plan except those two items for me, so. Um, I don't wanna put a stop on everything, but I wanted to discuss that.
Don't see any hands up, councilmember Howe?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, where I would agree with Kaylee is it, because we're a little late to the party here with um, the whole EIS BLOOM stuff. Um, in terms of understanding the full impact, um, we, we weren't on the council. And I, we don't wanna cha- necessarily, you know, re-overturn decisions that have already been made, because I think that's not particularly fruitful. But what I do think is that we can address this in the comprehensive plan, and I think that's the appropriate place to potentially deal with some of these. Components of the BLOOM EIS that uh, are problematic right now, like. That, that is my thinking on it at this time, because we have time to weave that in and to make adjustments. But that would be my intent, is to do precisely that, and it will certainly be much easier once we, you know, have another council member on board as well. And that will really help the process, I think.
So I think I'm, I'm supportive of what we did here, because council as a body kinda set a lot of this in motion, and then we had a um. Retreat where we kind of discussed this, and I think that's what staff has bubbled up for us for adoption here. Um, relative to the EIS and the concerns on costs there, one item that was um. Dealt with prior to voting on it, that I think is maybe important for those that were not on the council at the time that we did that, to understand is that. A lot of the remedies and the price tags that you see are also based on the traffic counts. That were done for the former or the current comprehensive plan that we use. And I don't think we have the time or the bandwidth today to get into um, how that works. Um, I think, you know, those of us that are, have been sitting on the council for a while probably have an intimate um, detailed understanding of traffic counts. And how when new applications come in, those are applied so that they understand what's, it's, it's complicated. But the, the key for me was that we can actually work on single occupancy vehicle traffic reduction. Simultaneously as pursuing the, the, this, the fourth option, because by the time we'd actually. the, the, this, the fourth option, because by the time we'd actually pull the trigger on, on, on doing anything relative to actually turning dirt on a project, is that we will have established a new baseline as far as traffic volumes, and we'll have a better idea of where we stand currently. Because that's really key when we're talking about, you know, whether or not people are working from home. If they're working from home, then they're not going to be triggering volume to capacity, um, issues for us, because they're not driving on the street, and because we're looking at VC ratios potentially only in the AM and PM peak hours, if they're not going and coming home from work, then they are not driving, and we will know that, because we will have established that new baseline. So, um, I think that there is, um, I, I really look forward to getting that new baseline, because I think we've been operating under, um, you know, that previous baseline of traffic counts, and then we're just kind of adding in all the applications on top of it, and what they would do as far as trip generation, and that isn't always, um, a reality check, and I think given the circumstances of COVID, we'll, we'll get that reality check, and I think that will be very helpful for us to see what's really going on, um, on our roadways. And as far as stormwater goes, um, I, I am still supportive of looking at, at ways that we can do things, I'm, I, I certainly am supportive of retrofits, because I think that's a, a great way, um, to, you know, provide, excuse me, um, a better way to contend with stormwater that's, um, you know, is not being retained, detained as we do now. However, there's always something, and best available science is always altering, and I think that we need to be up to speed on whatever that best available science is. And when we are considering the basins that are coming out of town center, for example, there, we, we're have, part of it is rolling to George Davis, part of it is rolling to E-Bright, those are both Coconie Salmon-bearing streams, and we have to be cognizant, there is also critical aquifer recharge areas up there, which is our drinking water. It is critical that we know, um, and are, and are being cognizant of, of what's going on up there, so I, I'm, I'm still supportive of, of these items on our work plan.
Councilmember Trine?
Well, of course, I'm going to talk about stormwater. It's, it's complex. Uh, eighteen months ago, when I first got on, it took longer than that, that, when I got on the council, I had, I had what I thought I knew about stormwater, after reading the Department of Ecology's manual, after looking the addendums, after having people pressure me to install old policies, it became pretty clear that this is a really complex issue. Retrofitting is the biggest bang for your buck, and yes, we need to do that, we saw that tonight. The, the, uh, replacing of weers is a big deal regionally. So, one of the largest challenges for all people who live along, who live on the lake that our city is named after, is the, uh, Bear Creek weir that then goes down to the slough in Marymore Park. That needs to be retrofitted, it's big bucks. Who's going to pay for it? So, we have consultants right now that we're paying for to study, look at this information, which is E-eight and E-nine, well, we have new numbers for them, but it's the studies that we're doing to have the scientific data that we need to make an educate, a decision. So, that's the process eighteen months I've been on with the staff and with the consultant, and to stop that now, it can be put on hold if this council decided to choose so, but I think it's a wrong decision. It's really, if, there's four elements to this thing, or four legs to the table, four legs to a stool is the way I looked at it initially, and then someone told me it's four legs are on a table. So, the four legs of this thing, we've been pushing the, I've been pushing this forward for eighteen months, and to, to put a stop to it now would be uh, harmful to the environment, to clean water, the Clean Water Act, which we actually, when I, you know, there, that's another issue, but we, you know, I, I uphold national laws as a sworn-in council member, so I need, we need clean water. And so, the, the stormwater process that we're going through, that's taking forever, in my opinion, but it's what it is, needs to continue to move forward, and to stop that would be a, a detriment, a harmful to the citizens of Sammamish and to the residents, and also to the wildlife. Thank you, Madam Mayor, back to you.
Councilmember Moran?
Um, I agree, of course, with Councilmember Trine, but I just want to throw in there that um, to stop where we're at right now, um, is, I mean, I'm, I, I'm just kind of shocked that this is even coming up again, because we continue as a city, we just approved money last week, I believe it was, um, for our fish, but how can we approve money for the fish, and we want to save the fish, when we don't want to do anything for the stormwater, the stormwater is what's killing the fish. So, we have to address this problem, and so we can't stop, because it's the wrong thing to do. Um, so, it, it just doesn't make sense, we have to move forward on this.
Councilmember Liam?
So, you mentioned new baseline for traffic?
Yep.
And I was wondering what that was and when that would happen?
So, I, I'll have to defer to Acting City Manager, if we have Jeff Ellicash on the line, I'm sure he can talk, but the city traditionally has done annual traffic counts, um, but we have not been lately, I think council had asked for that to be done, because they only took just a, a small subsection because of COVID. But we were actually, I think council at the time had expressed some interest in finding out what our actual traffic counts were. Um, but as far as the, the baseline in the comprehensive plan that then is used for any further development applications to kind of be added on to, um, I would have to ask, uh, Jeff Ellicash or or Acting City Manager if they know when that traffic count will be used for the comprehensive plan, hopefully as close to adoption of the comprehensive plan as possible, because that's always kind of been one of those things too. Oh, Scott, you're on mute.
There we go, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, again, Acting City Manager Scott McCall. Um, I'm going to apologize upfront, because I don't have that, uh, information in front of me, um, as we weren't planning on addressing this information tonight, however, what I would say is that we are happy to provide that information to council, um, you know, tomorrow, as soon as we can get it out to you, to help you understand what the timeline and the process is. I would note in terms of the overall work plan, if I may, that it is, it is just that, it's designating what we're going to be working on, and council might choose to change direction on that, on that component, but it doesn't change the fact that we still have to do the work. And so, from a broad policy perspective, uh, of, of the work plan, I think this is one of those items that we know we, we need to address. And so, what you all have to ask yourselves is, if we remove it from the work plan, then that work, um, that's telling, you're telling staff that that work should not happen. So, from the perspective in this moment of just approving the work plan, that's, I, I just want to, to throw that out there, and, and also just a follow-up on the stormwater code versus retrofitting. I don't necessarily see those as mutually exclusive, and I would, I would just remind council that these are the big, big items on the work plan, but there are lots of other things that we're doing on the day-to-day that involve these things, that we were just, um, putting these on the work plan, because these are items that are, you're going to be touching over the next year, and that's why they show up on this version of the work plan. All the work that's going on in the basin plans and all that kind of stuff is identifying, um, is my understanding, is identifying what projects need to happen, and that will lead to project lists, and then we would go out for funding, some of those I'm sure will be retrofits, some might be new projects. But that's kind of how those lay out, so from the perspective of, do you want us to work on these things or not? Um, my sense is, from the conversation, is that you all want those to happen. It's just a question of when do they come up, and, and how do you affect the policy in those moments? So, I think all those policy dec- decisions are, um, in the future, and by that I mean, not tonight. Um, but they are down the road, and we can provide follow-up information on both the stormwater code and the necessity for that, because again, it wouldn't make it onto the proposed work plan if it wasn't, if there wasn't a reason behind it. And then, in terms of the EIS, I just do want to clarify, the EIS was published, the final EIS was published already. So, what's moving forward is how you take that information potentially implemented as part of the comprehensive plan, and that's where the policy decisions are going to be made, that you all will have a chance to weigh in on, and if you, if council chooses to change direction, that's the point where that, those decisions would be made, so if that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate that, so council, to move this forward, we do need a motion.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, so I moved to adopt the resolution exhibit one, thereby approving the work plan.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by vote of five-one, the work plan is approved. Okay, council, next. See where we at here, um, item fourteen, this is a discussion, the PSRC countywide competition grant application. I assume I'll be turning this over to Jeff Ellicash, if we can get him promoted.
Like we're queued up here, there's Rory, great. Hello, Mayor, uh, my name is Jeff Ellicash, Public Works Director, um, and I'd like to acknowledge Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members and Acting City Man- uh, City Manager. Uh, the purpose of this agenda item, um, is to obtain policy guidance on whether or not to move forward to make applications for FHWA, uh, grant dollars, Federal Highways Administration, funds that are processed through the Beaufort Sound Regional Council for particular arterial corridor street segments in the city of Sammamish. This grant funding call for projects from, from this particular source only occurs every two years, is highly competitive. There are unique criteria and limitations that cause us to focus on which project might have the best chance of competing against all of the other cities in Dean County for similar kinds of corridors related to local town centers or, um, and, and the criteria that Rory will tell us later. Our project team tonight will include the following, uh, Rory Kirkpatrick, our management analyst, and grants manager extraordinaire, she'll be leading, um, the primary portion of the presentation. Jim Brubert, our senior project manager, is under the weather tonight, so I'll fill in for a couple of the slides related to, uh, some of the project stuff. Uh, for Q and A, Doug McIntyre is available, as well as Audrey Star, City Deputy Public Works Director. Before I turn it over to Rory, I would like to highlight, um, Rory in our transportation planning division, she has helped to shape our fabulous new uh, grant tracking and monitoring program, is currently monitoring, uh, or tracking eighteen stormwater grants, fifteen transportation grants, numerous solid waste grants, uh, for the near future. We plan to evaluate her eligibility for eleven more stormwater and transportation grants during twenty twenty-two. Last year, we were able to, uh, amass as much as five million dollars in grants, due to the fact that we have a dedicated uh, resources in our transportation planning group to be able to go after that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rory, who will lead the presentation, Rory?
Hello, um, I'm Rory Kirkpatrick, Management Analyst and Public Works, and today I'm here to talk to you about the PSRC countywide competition for transportation grant funds. So, let's go ahead and get started. So, today we plan on talking about the competition and some background and timeline, um, our potential project selection process, along with the status of the project and estimated costs. And then we'll go into considerations for city council, um, and then seeking questions, direction, and next steps. So, before we dive in, I did just want to give a quick introduction, just to sort of give us a high-level overview of what's going on. Um, so, PSRC is our metropolitan planning organization, and they funnel federal dollars to organizations, and they currently have a competition open right now, and it's for transportation improvement projects, and the application deadline is April twenty-ninth, and the funds would be for years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And with that, uh, I just wanted to dive into what's needed from council tonight. Um, so today, we're here seeking concurrence on applying to the PSRC, um, competition for transportation funds to compete, uh, to complete the PE phase of segment A and B of two eighteen of Southeast Corridor Improvement Project. And if council does want to pursue this funding, would it be for segment A and B, or just B? Uh, we're here tonight because we currently don't have a prioritized list, therefore, we're seeking concurrence from council. And so, with that, um, we'll dive deeper into the competition itself, so as I said earlier, um, PSRC's job is to funnel federal dollars, and these federal dollars go through two different distribution processes, regional and countywide, um, Sammamish is eligible for the countywide distribution, and that's because we have a locally designated center. We aren't, um, eligible for the regional distribution, so that orange flow chart on the left, um, you have to have a regionally designated center, so we aren't eligible for that, um, process. Um, and so, for the countywide distribution, the funding, um, is available to several competitions, and, um, um, they are, um, there is a lot, because there are a lot of eligible jurisdictions. Um, and the overall process is you submit an application, um, the projects get reviewed by a number of committees, and then it ultimately goes through the executive board to review, um, and approve for the adoption into the regional transportation improvement program, and then eventually the state transportation improvement program. And so, in that countywide distribution, there are six available competitions, depending on different eligibility requirements. And of those six, Sammamish is eligible to apply for three of those, including the larger jurisdiction and the two set-aside programs. For the larger jurisdiction program, the max request is five point four eight million dollars, and there is a thirteen and a half percent match requirement. In addition to that, eligible requests can be for a single phase or preliminary engineering plus the next subsequent phase. And phases also must be fully funded with that PSRC request and all other reasonably available funds. Um, requests also must be identified in the city's local comprehensive plan and on a federally classified road. So, for this program, the project evaluation criteria consists of policy criteria and technical criteria. And this criteria is outlined and defined in PSRC's policy framework. Something to note here is that sixty percent of the scoring, it's like fifty-seven points, um, is dedicated to that first bullet point, so support for development of the centers, including housing and employment. And so, it's clear that there's a policy focus on support for centers, and in addition to that, there is an update for the equity and safety criteria, which were recently revised and elevated. Um, and, um, in addition to that criteria, we also have benefit to user groups, mobility, accessibility, circulation, active transportation, and that technical criteria, air quality and climate, and project readiness. So, here you can see the competition timeline for the grant, and you can see that on March twenty-fifth, screening forms were due to PSRC. And this is the intent to apply, and, um, due to the quick turnaround of getting that submitted, and the earliest we can get the council was today, April fifth, we did submit that intent to apply, a sort of a way to hold our place in line. If we want to apply, we can move forward with the application, um, but, um, we just wanted to have that, uh, reservation in place. Um, if we do want to move forward, applications are due April twenty-ninth. Um, and then, in spring and summer, projects will be reviewed and presented to evaluation committees. Um, and then, the Transportation Policy Board at PSRC will, um, approve the recommended funding to the executive board, um, to then be, um, announced, um, in January of twenty twenty-three of the final state and federal approvals. So I'm going to pause here to see if there's any questions, just based on that application process and timeline, to see if anyone has any. Questions so far.
Uh, when would we have to prove that we have an air, uh, an earmark for the seven hundred thousand dollars or thirteen percent match?
So the obligation deadline is June first. So June first of the year, we're receiving the funding, so twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. By June first, we would have to have all the documentation in place.
Are there any other questions? I do have one additional question, just because the, these grants are specific for. A portion or portions of a project and because we don't currently have an adopted tip or whatever we are calling it these days. I think it's our goal to do that. But does that then, I, I think just for council's edification, does that obligate us then to have that as one of the projects on our tip?
Sorry, just so I understand the question correctly. Are you saying, are you asking if we need to have this project on the tip in order to be eligible for the funds?
Essentially, yes, because I think that's what, my understanding was that it had to be tethered to. An adopted transportation plan of some kind and if we're not operating with one, but we're going. On a previously adopted one, which this project was on. We will be in the future. June, probably adopting some type of transportation plan, uh, moving forward. The deadline for this grant process proceeds that my assumption is that we are then kind of. Saying that we are going to have to have that one on our transportation improvement plan. And it won't be an option necessarily to then remove it. Is that a fair statement?
Um, I do know that there is a requirement to have the project being identified in the local comprehensive plan. Um, I'm unsure if it has to be included in the tip.
Okay. Jeff, do we know?
For the purposes of the grant application, at this point in time, we have to demonstrate that the project has a reasonable chance of being funded. There's a reasonable thing, we have to, there's documentation that we need to provide that, you know, based on past tips that we've had or past funding. Demonstrating that we are likely going to fund the project. Your, your back out point would be, if that's one way of talking about or looking at it, would be if they look to award the project. And we still haven't made the decision that we plan to bu- build this project or, you know, commit to the P E phase in twenty twenty-five. Then, you know, the fall of this year, we could back out at that time if we haven't made that. But assuming that we're going to go forward, we will put it on the tip. It will be a funding commitment that the council is making. Because the expectation is, is that you use it or lose the funds and in twenty twenty-five, so.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I'm, um, don't misunderstand me, I think. Generally speaking, I think I'm in favor of this, I just, I guess I just want council to be aware. Cause everything you're saying, a reasonable expectation of funding, that is almost the definition of what's on your transportation improvement plan, right? Is that you have a reasonable expectation of funding a project if you associate dollars within that six-year window of your transportation improvement plan. So I think we're, we're saying that we're going to attach funding then. Outside of any grant funds that we should receive for this project, I, I guess I'm just letting council know, like, it would be an obligation for us. In advance of having a, a larger discussion on what transportation improvement plans we might want to fund.
And, and it's one of those oddities that we find ourselves in due to the effect of us postponing adopting tips for the last two years. And having that certainty due to the work that we've all done, which we understand what that is. We just find ourselves in wanting to be transparent of the opportunity. That we think that there's a project that has a fair chance of competing. But we don't have all the information, you know, in terms of it being on a tip and some of those things, and so we are taking a risk. But when we do, we do bind ourselves, if you will, in the graces of the grant agencies, that expectations you're going to move forward. And the, and the bind and, and if you will, that Rory will show us later. Is if we only do one segment of the project and today's adjusted dollars, it's, it's a million and a half. Commitment potentially if we go forward with grants, if we do both phases. You know, you're thirteen to fifteen million dollars and then if you compound inflation, you know, we're, we're making a commitment. You know, if we do go forward with the project, that's the intent.
Yeah, i- i- it does to some degree, I think it's, it's just hard because when you're talking about thirteen, fifteen million dollars. But we can't see, you know, the rest of the balance sheet, it becomes more challenging to make. Decisions, so.
And the council may not want to go forward this time around, that's, that's not uncommon. It's not a bad thing necessarily, it's just here we are, there's an opportunity and.
No, and appreciate those opportunities as they come before us. Councilmember Train.
Budget, uh, help me out, budget is. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that's the one we're gonna approve come November. Okay, thanks. Twenty twenty-three, twenty, so twenty-five, twenty-six would be the next budget. Is the shit, sorry, sorry. So the, so the question is, how do I pay for it? Cause I, cause I like the idea, right? I, I think eight, like, okay, I don't like fifty-four million for the whole thing. Don't see how REIT money is gonna pay for that and then it's only if we're gonna go with councilmanic bonds. Or create some revenue source that doesn't exist right now and tax, ta- tax. Okay, that's, that's all of it. The A and B, which is a combo, twenty, I'm gonna just say twenty-five million, twenty-four plus. It's twenty-five million and it's gonna be more because it's gonna be, like you just said, there's a increase.
Inflation.
Yeah, inflation, so how, how do I? With our understanding of the current budgeting, seven million a year of REIT money. Okay, let's say that even increases some because of property tax increasing in the city of Sammamish. Eight, three, four years of eight is twenty-four. You're telling me then, in a sense, I'm gonna spend all of my REIT dollars to do this project over the next four years. Is that pretty close, just on a napkin, you know, just kind of estimating off the top of my head?
That, that is one, one narrow view of looking at it. When we put the tip together, we'll be looking at multiple revenue s- source opportunities. If this project is to go forward, then we will likely have to find the revenue streams in the future. And those could be a variety of sources, a transportation benefit district, utility taxes. Other methods of, of, you know, property taxing or expansion of property taxes. Those you'll want, we will want to put on our tip so that the tip as a six-year window. Will inform us in future budget years of what we have to do when time comes. So, so I don't know if that helps or not, but that's, it's, it's tied in that regard.
Well, with that being said, it's kind of like, well, I mean, I drive this every time I come up, A and B, I drive A and B. Every time I come up to City Hall. So, uh, and I see the date, this, if, so back to my vision statement, if safety. And one of the other parts of that was infrastructure and one of the neighborhoods is the town center, which is right in this wheelhouse here. And parks is really important to me as well. A, A and B is a kind of like a, a, a must do. And part of it, part of it's already done with the development that's along A, Southeast Eighth. And some of the development that's gonna occur on B with the, uh, Brownstones East and West. So with that being, and Beacon Hill Park is our project eventually too. So I look at this saying, we need to go. Unless the numbers are really skewed that it's gonna break the bank. Um, I would support A and B and then let's figure out how we can fund it. Like, how are we gonna pay for it over, uh, twenty twenty-six, so four years?
And, and, and again, keep in mind, we are, we are looking at just the first phase of the project, which is the P E phase, there'll be later phases that we have to deal with. And the other thing, however, though, I, I do want to point out, to be fair. Is we're, we would be putting this project above potentially other projects that have not been discussed in the tip. Cause normally this would be a project that's on the tip, right?
So I'm gonna put that in place of my exit points from the city. That was on alternative four, option, or, uh, uh, option one, alternative four.
And let me be crystal clear here, this grant only, only is competitive to serve the best opportunity of a town. Of, of a local center, right? So we're looking for quarters that do that. Doing the fix at SR two oh two, for instance, in Sahaly Way, let's say we're gonna participate in that for some reason. Maybe you should, but that's a different topic. The point being is, is this grant doesn't go for that, but your local committed dollars do, right? So whatever we're setting ourselves up for commitment in the future, this becomes one of those ahead of some other things. So I'm not trying to argue against, going against it, but I wanted to be clear.
Or I have to dip into, or I have to dip in, I gotta buy, I gotta buy it with the credit card.
You got, yeah, we gotta come up with more revenue ultimately. And our whole big transportation system calls for us, you know, the need for very large numbers as well. Hopefully that's helpful in the, in response I gave you.
Okay, maybe I, maybe I retract what I said, cause I need to look at, I'm with the, uh, Mayor Malchow then. You know, we need to look at the whole, the city as a whole. As far as where are we gonna invest our T, T C I P money? I, I like the idea, I thi- I, I think we should go for the grant money for just the design.
You may want to just go for one of the phases, i.e. the lesser phase, which is less binding. And get you a connection to the town center as well as a connection to, you know, the parks. You know, that north-south segment, that's a smaller commitment, you know, as an option to the bigger commitment, right?
And you think, Jeff, I mean, this is just pie in the sky now, but you think that the, uh, the, the builders, uh. The builders of the park and the brownstones would also then partner in with us and say, hey, look, we got the design. We've got the engineering of it, this is what's gotta be built. In the city and, and a partner goes in and we actually build this road, cause it's beneficial to not only the residents, but also to the. To the, uh, town center.
You know, that, that question, uh, will, will, begin to evolve around what you're calling about developer agreements, developer participation agreements. Those are some of the tools that come into play. And if they see value in doing so, it's sitting down and seeing if they want to be a partner, um, you know, towards these things. That's a possi- it's a possibility, I'm not saying it's not, it just takes time and energy to get there and sit down and see if they want to play.
Thank you very much, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I have, um, of course, um, major concerns about. This project piecing it apart. Mainly because we are changing the, kind of the direction of where we would be putting traffic. I, I think we need to keep the project together. Because we've always anticipated the traffic from fourth. Which is the reason that we did, uh, and put the money into Inglewood Hill Road. And expanded that and put in the sidewalks and all that stuff was that, um, that was where traffic was headed from town center. So now we're saying, no, we're gonna send it the other way, we're gonna send them south to go north.
Can I qualify that? The reason that we're saying that, I, I mean, we're not saying that that's what we're intending to make happen. We're saying that that segment qualifies for this bucket of money. The, the city can choose to do C and D segments at any time when it finds those dollars to make that connection. The problem is C and D, if we were to go through the rest of the presentation, they don't qualify for this bucket of money. But they can qualify at any time that the council wants to bring more dollars forward for that phase, if that were, you know, the priority thing that we wanted to do. So I just want to provide that clarity, uh, Councilmember Howe.
Cause I, I guess I'm, um. And this is, this is just for. I mean, this is just for them, uh, the money is just for them getting this stuff on for design, right?
This application is only for design. Then we would come back for the right away phase and then later we've come back for the grant, uh, the construction phase. And then again, depending upon if we do B or B and A, we are obligating ourselves, leads to a committed future.
Okay, so we are putting ourselves to going that direction before going C and D.
Uh, that's with this bucket of money because it's restricted to the, the wash dot functional classification map. And in the center of this little map here is, you can see the purple lines vaguely, but I mean, you got Southeast Eighth and you have. Two eighteenth there in the middle.
Okay, so your answer is yes. Okay. Because I just, I, I can't see sending that traffic south to go north. Ever without opening up C and D at the same time.
I think that's a fair statement, if that's the, again, we don't have to do this this time around, but this is this opportunity in this two-year cycle. That meets this funding commitment. We could do C and D as a project, um, maybe through a T I B grant, Transportation Improvement Board. Could be a competitive grant for that project. Um, or we go through, when we get some additional staff time, we add in C and D to the functional classification. And then that'll be federally funded in the future. And we can make a strong argument that segment C and D should be added to the fu- future functional classification now. It's just not there today.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Support just trying to get funding for segment B only, um, it's closest to the town center. And we, um, have to be mindful of how we're spending.
So council, I'm not sure if we've given staff adequate direction on whether or not they should or should not apply for the grant unless, Jeff, you feel like you.
No, I would need a, I would prefer to have a motion that says what the council's intent is, all due respect. Or, or ask us to come back for more information, um, at the work session or the business meeting. But we kind of need to know, you know, relatively soon. So I, I, I'm asking that you provide some kind of motion direction, so there's clarity.
Okay, so for council's edification, you cannot make a motion in the negative, so if you're opting not to support this, I would just. Offer that you not support a motion favorable to it, rather than making a motion, so, Councilmember Train.
So I make a motion that we apply for, to the P S R C for Surface Transportation Program or S T P. Countywide competition for funds to compete the, uh. P E phase of segment B only. On the Southeast, uh, on the two, that's two twenty-eight.
Let's be careful of our language since we're.
Sorry.
Thank you.
That's two eighteenth, right?
Yeah, two eighteenth between the two other streets.
Thank you, my, I need new glasses.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can flip up another, Rory, could you, um, go to the A and B, or the B map? A B map, just so they can see that. One more, keep going, here we go.
Yeah, two twenty-eighth Avenue Southeast between Southeast Eighth Street and Southeast Fourth Street.
Yeah, two eighteen, two eighteen.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? I'll just make a quick comment that, sorry, and just for clarification, yours was just like segment B, correct, Councilmember Train?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I think if we're gonna do this, um, similar to what Councilmember Moran said, um. I don't know that we wanna pull these apart. So, I will be supportive of the motion. Any other discussion? If seen none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
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 Motion fails. Because, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Clark.
Uh, move to move forward with phases A and B of 218th.
As far as PSRC grants.
Thank you, Matt.
And just for clarity, segment A is Southeast Eighth between 212th and 218th, and segment B is 218th between Southeast Eighth and Southeast Fourth.
We need a second on the motion.
Seconded.
Okay, then moved and seconded, further discussion. If seen none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
I think I have one of four, too, I just have it for A and B.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, Rory.
Thank you.
Thanks to both. Oh, and Audrey, too, there's three of you there, I apologize, Audrey. Okay, counsel, it is 9:03. We still have a few items to go, including the council vacancy. Do you want to take a quick five-minute break, or are you gonna just keep plowing through? Five-minute break, okay, five-minute break, literally five minutes. Okay, 9:08, we're back here. All right, thanks, counsel. I've got 9:08, so counsel, so we know you're there, if you can pop the cameras on, wonderful. Uh, there we have Councilmember Liam, I don't see her on the list at all, actually. I think we lost Councilmember Liam. I don't see her either. All right, hopefully she pops back on here. But let's get rolling, it's 9:08. All right, counsel, our next item is item 15, which is the discussion on the Public Records Act Compliance Procedures. Mr. City Manager, I think I'm turning this over to Mike Sugg, he's already on the screen, so. Oh, Mike, he's got, there we go.
Apologies, trying to, if I'm aware, run the desktop here. Yes, so, good evening, counsel, Mr. Acting City Manager, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Tonight, we also have with us Emily Minor, interim Assistant City Attorney, as well as Lita Hatchey, our City Clerk, and Krista Keels-Meyer, our Management Analyst. And the purpose of tonight's presentation is basically just to provide an overview of the city's Public Records Act compliance and procedures in response to some interest from the city council in learning more about our process. So I think our City Clerk, Lita, is going to take us off the first couple of slides. We'll pass it over to Emily for a bit, and then it'll come back to me. Lita, are you ready to go?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Mike, the video is showing your slides, and so it needs to be in the presentation.
There we go.
Thank you.
Does that work? Thank you.
That's better, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members and city staff. I'm Lita Hatchey, City Clerk, Mike has already introduced everyone, but we will be sharing a presentation to you about the public records compliance and procedures tonight. These are the topics, next slide, Mike. These are the topics that we'll present it tonight. We will start with a breakdown of what a public record is, then an overview of the Washington State law and the City of Sammamish policy regarding public records. Then, what is a public records request process? With a detailed example of a category four request. Next slide. I'll turn it over to Emily Minor, who's going to review what is public record.
Thank you, Lita, and good evening, City Council. So, the Public Records Act is a fairly broad mandate, and I think it's important, before we even get into the act itself, is to understand what a public record is. So as you can see here, it's actually defined by statute. It's any writing prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city relating to this conduct of the government or any governmental or proprietary function. So it can include a whole variety of things that you wouldn't necessarily think of as an actual record. It can include maps, webpages, Facebook content, it can include voicemails, photos, recordings, for example, tonight's recorded meeting. And so I think it's important to understand that it's a really broad definition, and the idea there is to just make sure we're encapsulating kind of everything that the city does and touches. Next slide, please. So there are two sort of governing features here for our review of public records. One is the Washington State Public Records Act, it's codified at RCW 4256, and then the City of Sammamish has adopted its own policy. And the RCW 4256, the PRA, it's a law that was designed to ensure transparency in government action. Oops, it's, can you go back, Mike, sorry, thanks. I think it's important to just kind of explain sort of the background of it, because it's applicable to everybody, all local government, as well as our state legislature, and it's really just designed to make sure that governments are open for the public. The public can see what governments are doing. And so I think we should be aware of that and try and ensure that the public has access to our records. So a couple other things I think here to note is that there are some exemptions that do apply to protect records. Those are, those exemptions live in 4256. And then there's also several other outside exemptions that could apply. For example, healthcare records are protected under a different statute. There's also some other federal governmental regulations that apply to. And so there are exemptions that we review when we do get records requests in, and then look at the responsive records. Those exemptions are narrowly applied, but they do exist. And so we do review all the records that we are disclosing to see if there are any exemptions that would protect the release of those records. There's also RCW 4014, which talks about the retention of records. The retention of records depends on the length of time, excuse me, the amount of time that we need to protect or retain a record depends on the content, function, and purpose of the record. And so there's a whole bunch of variables that go into that, but the focus of tonight's presentation is going to be specifically on the disclosure of the records, not the retention of the records. And then again, I did mention at the beginning that the city has its own public records policy. We'll be getting into that in a little bit more detail later on this evening. But I think it'd be helpful to get into a little bit more detail about what the actual state-level Record Act does require us to do. So we'll head to the next slide. So the requirements of the PRA are that we need to assign and publicly identify a public records officer. That is important to have, so that folks who are requesting records know who to talk with and who can answer any questions about the records that they're requesting. The PRO's contact information is posted on the city's website and also in our policy itself. We also have to adopt a policy, which we've done there. And again, that we'll go through that in a little bit more detail later on. We need to publish a list of exemptions and prohibitions to disclosure, other than those that are listed in 4256. But I would note that failure to provide that list doesn't affect the applicability of any exemption. So we've got a little caveat there. We also need to maintain an index of public records, unless to do so would be unduly burdensome for the city. We adopt a PRA fee schedule, the city currently charges only for hard copies and mailing costs. We are unable to charge for the time, staff time spent on the review, which is unfortunate, but we do charge for the hard copies and any mailing costs if we have to mail the records to a requester. We also need to include a review procedure for any denial of the release of records. That is, that policy, that procedure is spelled out in our policy. And then every local elected official and every local PRO-identified officer needs to go through PRA training, so they understand the rules and the procedures, because there's a lot of timelines and the records, the redactions that need to be reviewed. And so training helps to facilitate all that. So I'm going to turn it back over to, I think, Mike, who's gonna walk us through the city's policy itself.
Yes, thank you, Emily. And as Emily just covered, one of the requirements of the Public Records Act is to adopt a local public records policy. So basically, this is how the city will comply with the Public Records Act at the local level. The most recent version of the city's policy was adopted by council back in 2018 and is linked in tonight's agenda bill for reference. There were two main reasons why this policy was updated in 2018. The first was to ensure consistency with a model policy that was put out by Washington State, basically to incorporate best practices that were in that model policy. And the second reason we updated it was to include a new process allowing for categorization of requests based on their complexity, which we'll touch on shortly. In general, the policy covers how the Public Records Act is implemented here at the city, all the way from submitting a request through to delivering the responsive documents. And the city makes it very easy for the public to submit those requests. There are four main methods that can be used, which are shown here on the slide, with the city's web portal being by far the most frequently used option. On the right-hand side of the slide here are a couple screenshots of our website, showing both the submission portal as well as the frequently asked questions page. And I think the City Clerk's office has really attempted to make this web portal as easy to understand and navigate as possible, because it is used so frequently. So once that request is submitted through any of those four methods we just looked at, the city then has five business days to respond to the requester. And state law dictates how the city may respond to that request, and there are five options shown here. The first option is to simply provide the records within the five-day window. And this happens most frequently for the simple requests where records are readily accessible by the City Clerk's office. For example, if somebody wants a copy of a building permit. The second option to respond to the requester is to send them a link to the city's website where the records are posted. So for example, if a document is available in the iCompass Document Center or somewhere on the city's website, it's just a matter of linking the requester directly to that page. The third option is to acknowledge receipt and provide a reasonable time estimate that we will respond. And this option is used when requests are more complex, that can be filled in the five-business-day window, the initial window there, and we'll touch on this a little bit more on the next slide. Fourth option is to request clarification if it's needed, and then provide a reasonable time estimate based on that clarification. And last, the city can just deny a request, and this isn't done frequently. It's typically done when the request either doesn't exist or the request needs to be obtained through a different agency. For example, if it's a King County Sheriff's Office record, that would be something that we would handle. My cursor here. So this talks a bit more about the third option on the previous slide. And so this is when a request cannot be fulfilled within the five days and more time is needed. In these cases, the city must provide a reasonable time estimate that it will take to fulfill the request. And state law outlines the factors that could be considered when the city is developing this estimate. And this would include things, so the city would look at things like the time it takes to search for, assemble, and review the records, among some other factors. And for requests that will take some time to fulfill, the city often provides records in installments as they become available. So the record requester isn't waiting until the very end to receive the records. They can instead review them as they become available. And around the same time that we're providing that five-day response, the City Clerk's office is also internally categorizing the records requests. So the category it's placed, their request is placed into, is based on the request's complexity and the time it will take the city to respond, with the simplest being category ones, up to the most complex being our category fours. And this categorization system was really one of the main reasons why the city updated its policy back in 2018, as I noted on an earlier slide. Prior to the 2018 policy update, we did not have a system in place to organize these requests internally, and instead they were handled in the order they were received. This often meant that the large and complicated requests in the queue would hold up the simple and straightforward ones, because we just simply went in the order they were received. And we found that this had a negative impact on our customer service, particularly for the smaller time-sensitive requests that could otherwise be fulfilled quickly, you know, had there not been a larger quest that needed to be worked on first. The categorization process, which was based on the City of Kirkland's process for managing PRs, really sought to improve customer service responsiveness and transparency in the way we process PRs. And so on the next few slides, we're gonna look through what it means to be a category one, two, three, and four, and Lita will walk us through that, so I'll go ahead and hand it over to Lita.
Thank you, Mike. A public records request will be categorized into one of four groups according to the nature, volume, and the availability of the requested records, as well as the complexity of the request. Typically, we are faster than what the policy requires and provide a high level of customer service. Categorizing the requests has allowed the needed customer service change and allows smaller requests to come before bigger requests, a definite process improvement. The city will respond to category one requests within five business days if available, but can extend the time up to 30 business days. In 2021, there were 281 category ones completed. Next slide. With a category two, the initial written response to the requester will be given within five business days. A response estimate is made on a case-by-case basis. Depending on the nature and scope of the request, category two records requests may require 30 to 120 business days, as they are dealing with a larger number of records and need coordination between other departments. In 2021, there were 108 category twos submitted. Next slide. For category three, we will provide an initial response within five business days, and the city will give a reasonable estimate of time necessary to make the records available. An estimate is made on a case-by-case basis again. Depending on the nature and scope of the request, category three requests may be required several months or up to a year to respond. In 2021, there were 34 category threes submitted. Next slide. Category fours can be quite involved and require attorney review and possible redaction of confidential attorney-client privileged material. The attorney may provide the documents in installments, and they determine the time needed for their review. Large, extensive requests require several months and can take over a year to complete. In 2021, there were 43 category fours submitted. Next slide. This is an example of a category four request. The requester is asking for the following. All documents and all communications between a certain date range for a specific large development project. A clarification was requested by the public disclosure officer, and the date range was reduced to a one-year period. This will include searching for all related emails and text messages. A reasonable search would include accessing all city employee and council email accounts, searching for a specific time, and including the topic of the project name, planning number assigned, the various project titles that have been used or issued for this development. Staff involved with this project would be asked to provide locations where the documents could be stored. For example, track-it, city network drives, or any hard copy files, in-house or at off-site storage. The search for text messages would need to be conducted on all city-issued cellphones, and then manually searched for the project name and details. In this case, multiple thousand of emails could be returned, along with possibly hundreds of text messages. The PDO would need to filter out junk emails, then review each and every email for responsive ones, and separate all those that may need to be reviewed by the attorney and possibly be redacted for confidential reasons. This review process can take weeks or months to complete, as the PDO will continue to work on it. This review process can take weeks or months to complete, as the PDO will continue to work on other requests. Once the review is complete, the attorneys are sent all documents needing review. The attorney's review can take months, several months, and completed portions are supplied in installments. Installments of responsive records can occur within one month or take as long as one year. Usually, regular installments are provided as records are located and documents are returned from the attorney's review. Next slide. Clarification of the request may be necessary. If clarification is received, the PDO adjusts the request to the clarification. If clarification is not received, the PDO will continue to process the request in installments. Developing a reasonable search. First, we must determine where records might reasonably exist. Then develop how best to search for the records. This may vary depending on the locations of where the records are stored and the tools necessary to search for responsive records. At this point, we would involve others who are necessary to complete the search, to develop, to determine who has access to records that you may not have, and individuals with expert knowledge on how to locate responsive records. Next slide, please. These are the tools that the PDO uses to find responsive documents. Microsoft 365 Compliance Center is used for all email searches, searching through the Samaish network drives and other internal software. Archive Social is used to find content on the city's social media posts. Iron Mountain is our off-site storage facility containing our hard copy historical documents. Schmarsch is used to archive all city cellphone text messages. Individuals may be asked to search their personal devices like cellphones for any city-related business. City will conduct broad searches to ensure records are not missed. Adjustment to the search may be necessary as additional reasonable places records might exist are located. The PDO must assist individuals with the search with understanding the search criteria, their responsibility to disclose records located and other parts of the PRR process as necessary to ensure compliance with the PRA. Performing a reasonable search and exemptions review process to address any concerns they may have. It will be necessary to check in with them regularly about the progress and assistance. Next slide. We must evaluate each record that is located for responsiveness. This step can be time-intensive and tedious. The city is conservative in their approach and completes a thorough search to ensure nothing is missed. With regards to email reviews, this can be a time-consuming process. Email results can be anywhere from one to several thousand emails, and this includes attachments. Rot analysis is made, eliminating all redundant, obsolete, transient content like spam, unresponsive documents, advertisements, outside groups, and solicitation, et cetera. We must evaluate all responsive records for exemptions. They must be reviewed for any confidential attorney-client privileged, current litigation, or any land acquisition discussions, HR employee communication, sensitive documents like employee performance reviews and resumes, et cetera. As a result, a search for text messages can return 5,000 text messages. Each text must be reviewed to see if it is responsive to the request. Sometimes only one or two text messages will turn up as responsive, but the whole process of review can take days to complete. Next slide. All possible exempt records are sent to the city attorney's office for review. This includes confidential attorney-client privileged records. All responsive records located for a request will be provided to the Requestor. However, a record may contain confidentially protected content, for example, a social security number. These records will also be sent to the attorney's office for review. If the content is deemed exempt from disclosure by an attorney, it will be redacted, which means blacked out. The redacted version of the record will be provided to the Requestor with a log stating the sections of law allowing the exception. Once documents are returned from the attorney's review, the PDO will provide the responsive records to the Requestor. Depending on the quantity of records needed to provide to the Requestor, documents can be emailed or sent via a file transfer protocol like Hightail or Dropbox. A request is closed once all records are provided to a Requestor. A request is abandoned after 30 days if records are made available but not reviewed by the Requestor or if clarification is requested but not provided, and no part of the request can be processed without it. The Requestor will be informed of the status of their request on a regular basis. Throughout the process, there needs to be coordination of all parties involved: Requestor, staff, council, and legal. Next slide. These are some ways the city are planning to improve our process. We've recently added additional staff to assist with PRRs while a staff member is on leave. We are implementing an electronic records management system throughout the city, entire city, which upon completion will allow the public to access non-sensitive public records online via a records portal. Our new city website will allow the public to access documents responsive to all completed PRRs. Next slide, Mike. And now we're open to questions.
Councilmember Howe.
I would love to know how much we spend as a city on responding to PRRs. Is there a bucket or a ballpark estimate that you could help me understand what our expenditure is around this? It looks extensive.
It is. We, let's see, if we have an actual total count. We did a rough estimate based on other staff that were involved, the attorney fees, the initial public disclosure officers, the paralegal temp office assistant that we've added on, and our contract legal services, and it was close to $400,000 per year.
That's huge.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, thank.
Thanks so much, Lita. And Mike and Emily. So I know that we tried to put this on about a month ago, so thank you guys for putting this all together. So I think kind of a couple of comments, I'm really happy to see that there'll be a portal. So stuff you've already done, people can just access instead of having to like make another records request. I know we've had a lot of comments and emails on the PRR process and kind of like, you know, it seems like a lot of these are falling into category four, which we get a lot of comments on and emails. So I think just kind of that basis of understanding and then hoping that, you know, with that extra LTE and a contract assistant, you guys have what you need to, you know, kind of keep your responsive timeline schedules. And obviously, you'll work through Scott and getting what you guys need. So I hope that it'll improve. I also know that Mayor Mao Chow was asking about, you know, have we just had like a huge increase in PRRs? You know, like for the kind of leg in response. And so I know we don't need those numbers exactly, but just kind of help fill people in on that would be helpful, too. So thank you.
Let's remember Liam.
I'm just curious as to like what percentage roughly are the PRRs filled within like the timeframe that we say they are? Is it really just like a few people that don't seem to get it on time? That it seems like they, you know, make a big stink about it, basically? You know, like would we say like 99% of everything is filled on time?
I would say a very large portion of our requests are completed before any deadline. And certainly, the category ones, which are the simple requests, are probably filled within the five-day requirement period for just a response. So we don't have very many complaints in our system, and it certainly hasn't proved to have them broken down into categories. It's always hard with the category fours because they are extensive, and they were involved a lot of review of the text messages and the cellphone, you know, that kind of thing where it's a lot more involved with emails when you have to break down thousands of emails and you have to read each one to find out if there's content within there that is confidential. So it is very time-consuming.
Lita, can I add a little gloss to that, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, sure.
To your answer. I think what's important to note is that the only deadline that the PRA actually imposes upon us a jurisdiction is the five-day deadline that says that we have received your response and we are doing something with it. And so that's, and the city actually does a really good job of responding when it can to those requests and providing the records within those five days. We don't have to provide the record in those five days. We are just, we just need to respond and say that we got it. But the city has gone above and beyond in providing customer service when they can to find those records and provide them in that five days. After that, we provide the records in installments. Again, that is a self-imposed deadline at that point. That's not a state-mandated deadline. And so I think it's just important to note that, you know, as Lita said, we do overwhelmingly provide the records within those five days, which is above and beyond what we're requested to do by the state law. And so, and to the extent that we can't get it in five days, we do provide it in installments so people are getting the records, you know, as we have resources to provide them. So just a little extra gloss, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe, did you?
Just, yeah, quickly, just, it would help if those metrics were actually posted potentially, where you have your portal with the PRRs, to be able to just have some kind of measurement to say that, you know, or a performance factor that's actually listed somehow. It would resolve any kind of perception issues. And I'd also suggest that there are people that assume that, no, no, five days, you're supposed to give me everything in five days. I think there is a misconception there. So that's, but the best way to know is how you're performing is to be able to actually point to a stat. So if there were a way to do that, that wasn't, you know, too onerous, it would be a real benefit and it could maybe ease burden to a certain extent.
Thank you. We'll look into that and see if we can find some way to show our stats.
Your great progress.
Yes, thank you.
You're on mute, Karen.
Lita, on that same note of showing your progress, you state that like in category-one, you had 281 submitted, and category-two, you had 108. So can you show how many, you can show how many were submitted. Can you show how many were then done on time? So you can say, you know, 281 were submitted, 281 were out on time. 108 were submitted, you know, 106 were out on time. Can you, I mean, because, I mean, I think if you can show that, then they've got nothing to complain about.
Right. Yes, I believe we can show that information. We do have a log of when they were opened and when they were closed and.
Yeah, I think that would be excellent information, and I would just show, you know, boom, boom. Then there's just really, it's, you know, stop grumbling, you know, it's right there. They are getting it done, they are getting it done on time. And I feel sorry for you guys because you guys really do seem to get a bad rap a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Acting City Manager.
Making sure I was on, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really quickly, I just want to, to Councilmember Moran's point, I do want to level set a little bit and just recognize what Amy, Emily had pointed out. Excuse me, in that meeting, the five-day deadline is not the same as actually getting all of the installments completed. And I think the majority of where we hear complaints are around essentially the categories threes and fours. So we are, we will absolutely go back and figure out some metrics that we can put out there. But I just want to, I just want to be really clear that where folks are frustrated, and I understand, is that the installments take a long time because it's very, very labor-intensive to do all of the reviews for those really complicated requests. And sometimes we are getting a secondary request because the first one wasn't coming in as fast as a Requestor would prefer. So then we have to add that in and start the whole process over again. I think one of the things that Lita was describing about having a portal where they can go see what was produced previously is right now, we can't reproduce something for somebody else without having them submit a PRR. So we're generating a new one to receive one that was already done. And so if we can point to another one that was already completed that has the majority of what somebody asked for, we might be able to really cut those down, but we're not, we're not there yet. So we're trying to sort of work on process all the way around is to try to make it better and easier, both on staff and for people that are requesting roughly the same kind of information. I'm just going to say it out loud, council will not be surprised that we've had quite an uptick over the last few months about the really substantive requests for public records. And so every time one of those comes in, we're starting, we're starting the process all over again, doing that same thing. And we can't not review everything for each one of those records. So I just want to give some real kudos to Lita and her team because they are, they are really doing a top-notch job of trying to wade through all that stuff. And I recognize that there is misconception, and we are trying to politely respond when we are supposed to and provide information as fast as we can get it out there.
I'd really like to commend Krista Kilzmeier, who has stepped in when somebody, when we needed her and just took charge and has done a wonderful job in the last several months doing all the public records requests. So thank you, Krista.
Might I suggest that it might be helpful even on, you know, when residents go to either look at the public records request or to submit one, that maybe the slide deck that was presented here appear there? Because that might help folks to understand this was a really good presentation, both for council, because I learned stuff, but the general public might be interested in that as well.
It's a good idea, yeah, I think we should do something like that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all. This was enlightening just to see how many there are in the process you have to go through for each one of them. I think it's really helpful, especially for the general public to understand sometimes why the turnaround time can be so long, especially on top of all the other ones that you're also contending with. So thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Okay, council. Next, we have an executive session. This is to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1H and potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1I. We'll estimate that will probably be an executive session for 30 minutes, and council may take action.
We looking at 15 minutes for each of those, Madam Mayor?
I don't know if it's 15 minutes for each, just 30 minutes total.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, we'll see you over there.
Madam Mayor, are you going to vote to extend the meeting before you go into your session?
She left. So definitely.
Do we have enough?
I'll wait here.
I'll jump into the executive session and ask her to come back out. Hang on a second.
Thank you, Emily.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, Lita, can you send us the slide deck that you did tonight?
Yes, I can email that to everyone.
That'd be great. That was really very helpful.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Scott, I guess we should, I should wait, I guess. I got a question about notifying for executive session, which is kind of why I brought up how much time for each item. Is that something that's required by Robert's Rule of Order?
To my knowledge, councilmember, no, there's no requirement to differentiate between separate items in executive session.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We have to extend.
We have a quorum and the deputy city man, or the deputy mayor's here, so we could technically do it the four of us.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion, Ken. Motion to extend.
I'll second it, motion to, how long?
Okay, motion to extend until 11 o'clock.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forum of council, oh, okay, you guys did it without me, wonderful, great.
11 o'clock?
11, Chris.
Is anyone not in favor?
I didn't hear what the motion was.
To extend to 11.
11.
It's all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Opposed? All right, what are we, at 6:00? Meeting till 11?
All right, see you on the other side.
The executive session has been extended to 10:30 PM, thank you.
Councilmember Moran, was she just?
Okay.
There she is, okay. All right, we've got everybody back. So we are on the city council member vacancy and selection, so entertain a motion from anyone.
Yeah, I make a nomination of Jerry Norman for seat six, city council.
I can second that.
It's removed and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
3-3, motion fails.
I move to nominate Pam Stewart. Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, 3-3, motion fails.
I make a motion to, for Michael Boyer.
Second that.
Okay, it's removed and seconded, discussion? Really quick, I, I, did we interview Mr. Boyer?
No.
Okay, that makes it more challenging. Is he on the line? I don't know, I think it's really hard to interview folks, this is 11th hour, but we could. Okay, there's no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay. Okay.
Motion fails, 3-3. I'm gonna give you guys about 30 more seconds and then I'm gonna move to the next.
I'm going to nominate Kelsey, Melanie Kelsey.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
3-3, motion fails.
I move to nominate Josh Amato.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, 3-3, motion fails.
I nominate Rich Banat.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails for two.
Move to nominate Rama.
I'm just not gonna do anymore.
No second from anyone on Rama, he is a really nice guy, works on the school board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just not gonna do this anymore, we're not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you very much, sorry for that, Madam Mayor, for the disruption of the current proceedings of the council, I apologize for my behavior.
I'm not talking, but you're just making nominations, there's nothing wrong with that? Okay, council, I don't see any more motions, and so I will move on to item 17 if there's nothing else. Does council want to put this back on the agenda or not, considering that we don't have any additional candidates? And I would look for a motion if council wants this back on, well.
I move that we put this back on the council for April 12.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's removed and seconded, any discussion?
Go ahead, Karen.
You know, I, I think we need to keep, really need to keep plugging away at this, there isn't just one person for this, I mean, we've, we keep throwing out names, there isn't just one person for this. So, yeah, I, I think we need to, we need to put it back on.
Do the work, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of adding this to the, I believe it's April 12, which is a study session, I don't know if we need to change it to a special meeting, or not, Mr. Acting City Manager, but I guess it depends on how the vote goes.
Yeah, in order for you to vote on it, I would recommend making it a special meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we've already changed it to a special meeting for next week, so...
Oh, there you go, all right, wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, 3-3, motion fails. Okay, council, I'm gonna move on, item 17, investigative report on former city manager Dave Rudat. Councilmember Howe?
I would like to move that we direct the acting city manager to direct the city's legal department to give all six current city council members a complete, unredacted individual copy of the Rudat investigative report related to RCW 42.30.110. The copy should be watermarked with individual names. This is still a client attorney privileged material. It will be returned to city hall two weeks after receipt.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, councilmember Howe, did you want to speak to your motion?
Briefly, I'll just say that this is, and, well, it would, it makes it much easier for us to be able to spend time looking at the report at, and our, and our private residence is, you know, a protected material, of course, it's not gonna leak anywhere. And it saves us from having to invest in having an attorney sit and babysit us to base, to make sure that, you know, nothing happens to that piece of paper. So from my point of view, this is a courtesy to the city council members and a convenience. Two weeks is ample time to review the document thoroughly, to understand its intent and what we could, what should happen perhaps later with it, if anything at all. So I, I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I will now be supporting a motion and I do not want a copy sent to me, my residence, or in any form. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
I also don't want a copy sent, but I still, this sets a precedence that I don't think we should be setting, and I also state that this, this again goes against our own council rules, which sadly, I think we are starting to use more as a weapon than as the actual rules, so I will be voting against it.
Okay, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, 3-3, motion fails. Okay, next, council, we are going to closed session, which is the review of professional negotiations well in progress pursuant to RCW 42.30.144B. Not really sure on timing for that. Now that marries up, how about we say 20 minutes, because we have an 11 o'clock stop for our meeting, that'll force our hand to come back out. Okay, we'll see you on the other link. Always adjourn early.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of extending to 11:30, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, my vote is 6-0, we're extended to 11:30, and we need to run back to executive session under the same RCW.
Open session.
Oh, no, it's not executive.
Open session, thank you.
Closed session, review of professional negotiations well in progress pursuant to RCW 42.30.144B. Okay, Scott, will you please join us back there? Thank you, see you over there. We're supposed to fly out again, and I'm like...
They say they're trying, but...
Yeah, they better try harder.
CBD, exactly, yeah.
All right, we got one more minute. Oh, it's 11:30, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Nope, hold on, let's make sure they're rolling first.
Yeah, he's, he's back there, so I think we're, we're good to go.
All right, now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
It's moved and seconded, I assume there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, my vote is 6-0, we are adjourned, thanks all.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you.